Good evening. I would like to call to order our January meeting, the first one of the new year. We're so excited to have everyone here in council chambers with us as well as those joining us on our YouTube channel this evening. First, we will move into our agenda adoption. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as presented this evening?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that has now passed. This time, we will have Councilman Devon lead us in our invocation this evening.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day here in Harrisburg. Thank you for sparing us the truly bad inclement weather this past weekend, where we just pray for those who are still suffering from the fires in LA County and California. And God, just, we don't want to forget those in western North Carolina that are dealing with the frigid temperatures and no housing right now. So God just continue to lift them up. And Lord, let us not forget about them as well. Just ask you, bless this meeting this evening, God. Keep it to the point and peaceful. And God, just help us to respect one another. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Devon. If everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any special presentations this evening, so we will move into the public comment portion. Anyone wishing to address the town council, there was a signup sheet out front. I do have that. Please be sure to state your name and address for the record when you are called. Please keep your comments about the subject in nature. We do have a few folks signed up to speak, so if you could limit your comments to three minutes, so we can continue with our meeting this evening, we would appreciate it. If we are unable to answer your questions, or you have additional questions after listening to someone making public comments, please feel free to reach out to us via email. It's council@harrisburgnc.org. We're happy to follow up with any of you on that. First on the agenda, we have Brian...
Louts.
Thank you. I was gonna butcher that, so I appreciate you clarifying. Just state your name and address for the record, Mr. Louts.
Brian Louts, 88, 86, Cotton Grove Court. Just wanted, before we start, just to your attention, that we did have a handout everyone should have. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As president of the Addison Park Homeowners Association, I've come to ask this council for help. We are a newer development and have not been able to get the builder, Niblock Homes, to fix our problems or respond to our requests for a meeting. The information packet we are handing out to the council lists the issues the residents want the builder to remedy. We request the town council not accept the HOA from the builder until Niblock Home addresses our concerns. Now, last spring, Niblock Homes turned over the day-to-day management to the residents of Addison Park. Since then, the homeowners association has uncovered quite a few issues with the development for the builder to address. I will not go take this time to address everything on our to-do list, but I did want to highlight our biggest concern, the flooding some of the homeowners experienced during heavy rainstorms. Numerous deficiencies in the design of the existing drainage system have been noted by the Harrisburg Public Works Department and by the Independent Engineering Group. Unfortunately, not all the drainage issues are under the jurisdiction of Harrisburg. The HOA is willing to work directly with the adjacent neighborhood to make those permanent fixes to the drainage system, but we need the builder to step up and to fund the projects. Over the past eight months, the HOA has worked closely with the Harrisburg Public Works Department to understand the issues and find solutions. We have a good idea of what actions are needed, but need Niblock's assistance to complete the projects. The HOA engaged a law firm to arrange a meeting with the developer, but Niblock Homes has stonewalled us up to this point. We want the council to be aware of our situation and the efforts made by the HOA and Public Works Department. As a small HOA, we have few options to get Niblock Homes to live up to the promises they made to the city, Addison Park residents, and the adjacent neighborhood. Our best leverage is for the city of Harrisburg to remind Niblock Homes that a claim against the performance bond is a possibility if the builder does not make a good faith effort to work with the homeowners. As a resident of Addison Park, I'm requesting the town council actively support our efforts to achieve a fair resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Louts.
All right.
Next up, we have Wally Wallace. Wally, just make sure to state your name and address.
Good evening. Wally Wallace, 3093 Spring Forest Road, Harrisburg, North Carolina, 28075. Thanks for letting us have an opportunity to speak to y'all tonight. Why are we presenting information to the town council? Y'all all have the packets, okay? As council members and the decision-makers, you need to know some of the down-in-the-weave things that you normally don't see, that your staff deals with, and see if you have any options to assist in decision-making about certain issues. They have worked very hard with our residents and have patiently dealt with the developer. The packet that y'all have received is an example of the existing situation of residents trying to get the developer of Addison Park to take action on items that need correction or completion. This has been going on for over two years, okay? Maybe you can do something to keep this from happening to future new subdivisions. Question, how do residents get a developer to act on issues that are identified as the subdivision is being built? Now, I'm not talking about picky things, okay? Residents have little or no recourse to ensure things are properly completed within established guidelines. Our understanding is, there are three basic items the town staff evaluates before recommending to the town council final acceptance of the community. They are retention ponds, streets, and sidewalks, all right? That's my understanding. Also, I believe the approval by the council falls under your consent agenda portion of the agenda. Normally, there's no discussion. That's another reason for giving you information, okay? Now, is there any attempt to... Excuse me. Those three issues are very important. However, is drainage issues a part of the final checklist? Is safety issues any part of that final checklist? Is there any attempt to check with the residents about unknown issues? How is town management to know about those possible unknowns without doing so? Without ignoring the instructions that William Niblock personally called me and told me to desist and stop communicating with other residents about issues in the community? If I hadn't have done that, a lot of the sidewalks would not have been fixed properly, okay? That's just one example. The items in your packet have been presented to the developer in the past. It has felt that we have been stonewalled, as Brian said, with a developer hoping we will just get tired, shut up, and go away, all right? You can look at communications that your staff has. We're seeing the lapse of time since this has brought to their attention. We're talking about Niblock. These efforts by the residents started in '22. Please take the time, please, to familiarize yourself with that packet. I have put a couple of red checks on each of the two pages that are very important, but all of them are important, okay? We thank you, and again, I can't say enough for Public Works and what they've done and helped us. I'm not sure about the town manager, but you know, thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally.
Just kidding, Rob.
Next on the agenda, we have William Adam. Mr. Adam, if you could just state your name and address for the record at the podium, please.
My name's William Adam. I live at 206 Lakeview Drive, Harrisburg, and I'm sure you know why I'm here.
I do.
And I just want to know, what are we gonna do about removing a sex club from my neighborhood? The last, it's been nine months now of five nights a week, we don't get to sleep because of the cars, the noise, people screaming and yelling outside. There's been drug busts, several of them, and right now, it's business as usual. And I just need to know what the council is doing to fix this violation of town ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, I was gonna respond to Mr. Wally Wallace's insult to me, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Adam. So if we want to get through public comment, then I can give you guys an update on this. Is that everybody?
Yep, that's everybody.
Perfect, perfect.
Perfect.
So, you know, we had talked a little bit before the meeting, Mr. Adams and Ms. Adams and I, about 206 Lakeview.
213.
213, I'm sorry, year 206.
Clear case.
Set up the wrong address, please.
It's an important distinction to make, isn't it? So for those unaware, you know, we don't deal with this often in local government, but we had a homeowner purchase a property in a residential subdivision, very quiet neighborhood, nice family neighborhood, and start running, as he said, a sex club out of it, really. And I think that's probably a kind term. So we have been dealing with this person on many levels, trying to figure out, what tools does a government have to go and stop behavior like this? We know we don't want it, but the legislature does tie our hands pretty tight between what we can do as a local government on legal issues versus moral issues, right? What people do at their house, no matter how deplorable, they like to make sure government can't deal with that, right? That's between homeowners. But in this case, there's criminal activity that's going on there, and that's public records. So I'm not saying anything out of line here. And I know our officers aren't here to speak tonight, but you know, they've been dealing with this for the better part of about six months. We've had several...
Nine months.
Yeah, well, the officers have been dealing with it for the better part of six months with several raids on it that have turned up illegal activity, drug activity, and others. And we have open criminal investigations on that. And I think, you know, to sum it up, so we're not here too long, we have two avenues that we're going on this. One is a criminal, which tends to be where we have more force. It tends to be quicker, and we can get action for folks. We also have the zoning code, right? You can't use something in a certain area of town that's supposed to be used for a home and then use it for a business. So if you're charging for things like this, if you're doing something other than just a residence, we can go after that. We tend to be pretty lenient on that, right? There are people that sell products out of their home online on Amazon. That's a business. Technically, can get into some gray area on our zoning code. But if it's clear and in your face like this, and these people are not good neighbors, they do not try to hide it. They try to park on their lawn. It's a real issue. So the other way is to go after it in the zoning. That is not a quick process. For those that remember, the last one we did was Hudson Road. We had a shooting on that site, and it took us about 18 months for the courts to agree with us that it was a danger and a health and nuisance issue. So we're very empathetic. I've got Zach working on this extremely hard. Rich has the zoning complaint written up, and that will be filed Monday. We did have an agreement from this property owner, a verbal agreement, that they would sell the property, and we would waive the thousands of dollars of fines that we've assessed up to this point for them being in violation. They retained legal counsel, and then, right before the holidays, when we asked in early December for them to sign the agreement, they ghosted. The attorney was gone, the person doesn't respond. So now we're to the point where we're filing the court action on the zoning complaint. We hope the criminal stuff comes back quicker, but that still has to go out to state labs to test for things. And it is very frustrating. I'm not as frustrated as you, because I don't live next to it, but I'm as close as you can be frustrated without living next to it. This is something y'all shouldn't have to deal with. And I think the council would echo that, you know, you have our full support if there's some way that we can help, and we'd like to come out and meet with the neighbors again and give everybody an update on where we're at on the criminal case, where we're at on the civil case, which is what the zoning complaint will be, and what we expect timeframe. But I know Zach's passionate about this. Rich is working hard on it. Captain Meesmer's working hard. And you know, anything we can do out there to help. I feel bad about this, but unfortunately, I think you'll see this, you know, when I talk about the Addison Park issue as well. You know, the state legislature really goes out of their way to make sure that local municipalities don't have the tools they need to help, because they're afraid we'll use them to hurt. And you know, I understand that the hesitation and having kind of a big, powerful local government, but this is the most accountable you get, right? It's pretty hard to go talk to the governor. You don't get to go up to a dais and talk at their meeting every month for the state legislature. This is where government's accountable. It's where it's closest to the ground. And I wish we had more tools, but it seems to be that, you know, every budget that is passed, we find new legislation that takes away more tools that we have in order to enforce things like this. And they make it very hard for local municipalities to have a lot of teeth in these things. So I would ask you to bear with us, but we'd certainly throw any resources we have at it to try to get rid of that owner out there.
I appreciate it. The only other concern I have, too, is, you know, when these people leave, a lot of them are under the influence. There's been several people that have been so drunk that they've parked their cars all over the place, trying to sleep it off. We have two bus stops on that street for students coming to school. One's right across the street from that house on that corner. And you know, God forbid, if one of these people leaving there, six, seven o'clock in the morning, is under the influence and hits one of these kids at the bus stop, you know?
Yeah, we'll make deputies aware of that as well. And look, if we can get people for speeding, or DUI, or improper parking, we'll do it. I mean, they shouldn't be out there. They shouldn't be doing this. They know they shouldn't be doing it. We've made it very clear. We've raided the house twice. They know what they're doing, and there's no reason to be light on it. I mean, we'll put every resource we have out there. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. All right, with that, we will move on to...
Let me talk to Addison Park, since we have them, because I think it's important for councils to know, too. And I do appreciate Brian and Wally and the rest of the neighbors out there coming here. I was able to speak to them a little bit ahead of time. And I haven't been able to read this yet, but I'm sure it's mostly right, I'm sure. I'm sure it's, and I know they've been working with our staff. I think this is a good reflection of why it's so important to have top-quality engineering and public works staff onboard in a growing community. In a town like Harrisburg, it's, and Niblock's a good builder. I mean, it's not like Niblock is, you know, a lower-level developer. They're a good-quality builder. They're a high standard, and there's still issues, right? And there's still communication issues, and there are things that come up. And we have built processes in that will deal with, I would say, most of this. I haven't read all of it, you know, meeting with the HOA prior to turnover. This isn't any of the HOA's responsibility yet. And their concern is that, one, I think Niblock is taking too long to fix this, which, again, our hands start to get tied with 160D state legislator issues, every budget bill, and we saw it again in July. I think everybody on this dais got an email of the two dozen or so things that we enforce now that we're no longer allowed to enforce. So we, against developers and builders. So every year or two, we have to go back at the staff, and folks like Devon and John Mallory before them have to, you know, use those big brains that they have to figure out, okay, we're not allowed to do this anymore. How do we get the same result through a different avenue? And a lot of that is like this bonding that we currently have. Like you had mentioned, we could enforce their performance bond. That's true. Like, they've got a substantial performance bond, and we could use that as a way to push that if we get to that timeframe. And we'd have to talk to Rich about, you know, what those timeframes are. We're not allowed to do that for any other builder ever again. We're not allowed to do performance bonds for builders because of the 160D changes that the state legislator made just six months ago. And you know, the people in this room probably don't, aren't aware of that, right? Our state legislators go to Raleigh, and we don't really talk to them about the bills they make. We just, we kind of deal with the problems of it right here. But in the future, Wally makes a great point, you know, we need to think about, how do we motivate somebody to fix something if we don't have a performance bond on anything relevant? And if we try to enforce it, if they do, let's say, you know, road resurfacing or something we disagree, they're now allowed to hire a third party that can overrule us and say, well, this engineer says it's fine, so the town's opinions don't matter. So if Niblock were to build this today, and they could find some engineer to say that swale that doesn't work does work, that's good enough for the state legislature. The community and the town Harrisburg just need to pound salt. So I wanted to point that out, because I think it's a, you know, it's a good time, and it's relevant here. I think everything here is a little bit frustrating for the Addison Park folks, but it's all solvable. We have things in place that I think we can get this neighborhood to a really good point. I fear that our future neighborhoods, it's gonna be a lot more difficult, and the state legislators are making it a lot harder for folks like Devon and John to make sure that our neighborhoods that come in are, they do what they say they're gonna do. It's one thing for them to design these plans and get plan approval, but then what if they don't follow? What teeth do we have? What enforcement do we have? That's becoming a critical issue statewide. And I think you'll see more and more residents like this coming in with frustrations about what the town, what is the town gonna do? And a lot of our answer in the future, I think, is gonna be the town doesn't have the right to do anything. And that's a scary proposition to begin. So, you know, we'll work with Brian and Wally on getting everything in this book tidied up. And I think we have a great staff down in engineering with Devon and his group that will be able to get that done. And if there's any way that, or anything we need from council along the way, we'll bring that up to you. And I'm sure everybody on here would support making sure that builders and developers do what they say they're gonna do and do right by the residents that buy homes in their communities.
And Rob, one of the positions that we did put in, but it came in after the fact of Addison Park, it came in after Bloom, but Bloom brought to our attention was the grade inspector. You know, we realized there was a gap between county and Harrisburg. We've added that position, but again, it's another one of those, after your neighborhood was developed. So you wouldn't have had any benefit from it, but we have since added that role.
Right. So, you know, so part of Grantham and Camilla Gardens and those have had the benefit of a grading inspector who looks at each lot and makes sure that we don't have, you know, neighbors running into neighbors, which is what you guys have over there, off lot coming on and creating these problems. So we went and we fixed that, and we're one of the first communities in the state to have a grading, a lot grading program. And then we hold the CO, so people can't sell these homes or move somebody into them. So it becomes this kind of stopping point. And then in July, the state legislator says, no, you can't do that anymore. You're not allowed to hold the CO. You can inspect it, and you can do this, but it's not life safety, so you can't hold the CO. So now, we've got to go back to the drawing board, and we meet weekly on this to go over these rules that get changed. It's like, okay, now, how are we gonna enforce it without a CO? Is there, are we allowed to hold a bond? Are we allowed to hold this? So, you know, we're trying, but it's like, it's exhausting trying to keep up with the builders lobby who is constantly in Raleigh, finding ways to get around any restrictions. And we gotta keep reinventing the wheel. So, but we'll work with you guys. It's a long way of saying, we'll make sure you're good, but I, we have our work cut out for us to make sure future developments are good.
Thank you, Rob.
Do you know who the, what committee this is under in Raleigh, and who the chair is? I know everything just switched around.
Yeah, it comes from, I don't know that specifically, but I know that these bills in the past have come from multiple committees into like a comprehensive bill. So, for instance, the 160D changes last year were in eight committees simultaneously. And trying to keep up with that, I mean, the league is keeping up with some of it, and they did a good job of stuff on the stormwater, or the wastewater allocation rules, because those were thrown out originally. And Centralina does a good job of trying to advocate for us. But honestly, without having the same lobbyists that they have that are kind of embedded in the bill writing, it's very difficult to keep track of this. You know, I hear a lot of this secondhand from like Midland, who employs a lobbyist when they're in session, and their manager will call and say, hey, do you know this, that, and another? No, I don't. I do now, so now I'll try to make the league aware of it, or this one aware of it. So it's frustrating. It's all the, in a Dillon Rule state like North Carolina, where all the power resides in the legislature, you never know what you're getting each year. They can just, they can change the rules completely. And sometimes I think the legislatures don't realize, because most of them haven't been council members or mayors, they don't understand necessarily how it affects us at this level. There's lots of times where I brought this up, like Senator Newton, and he's like, oh, wow, that's terrible. Yeah, no, let me work on that. He was completely okay with it before, because this just isn't where he's at. But when he realizes how it affects us and affects the residents, then I'll bring it up, so.
I only say that, because, you know, part of our job, too, is to lobby for our town in Raleigh. So if you're up there, go get a meeting with these folks, sit down and say, this is the real-world effect we're having on you. And for the public, too, that's watching, write them. I mean, they will read it. I'm not saying, well, do what you want them to do, but it, you know, a large force does change their minds the same way that it does for everyone sitting up here. You know, if a whole bunch of people don't want it, it makes us think really long and hard about it, as opposed to sounds like nobody cares. So make your voices heard here to Raleigh, and we should do the same.
Thank you. We'll move into our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented? Some move. Is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll move into our communications. And first up, get to hear from our town manager again. Lots of speaking tonight. Thank you.
I'm back up. All right, exciting. Couple of quick reports for you mayor and council. We submitted our train station grant back in December, and Devon was able to pull that together. And I wanted to make a shout out to Devon, who had just come onboard this summer. So we had to both get up to speed with this project, understand it fully, and then submit the town's first federal rail grant, which is an endeavor in and of itself. And he did a wonderful job. We're really proud of him and his team getting that done. We will still pursue state appropriation as a backup. The mayor and I had went there in the last budget bill, asking for funding for this, and they had recommended we go for federal funding. So we've done that, and we will be back at state appropriation, trying to get the funding gap for that project. Also, Aaron Kegley Paris, our Parks and Rec Athletics Manager, received on behalf of the town a $5,000 no-match grant for North Carolina Amateur Sports Fund, and that will go for equipment. So their plan is to use that for replacement of netting and mats in our batting tunnels at Stallings Park. And our third and final grant, which you'll hear the details of from Chief Dunn later, as he asks you to accept it, is a $25,000 grant by Duke Energy, and that'll be for our Swift Water Rescue Team equipment upgrades. And like I said, I'll leave the details. I don't want to steal all of Chief Dunn's thunder, but we're really proud of our grant efforts. I know this has been something that I've hit a lot on lately, but I don't think I can point out enough that, you know, each one of these grants would otherwise be funded with tax dollars. So I think, you know, don't quote me on the number, since I know these meetings are recorded, and sometimes our residents will go to the 12-minute and 37-second where you said 26 million. It was 25.9. But we have some $25 million in grants that we've gotten over the last several years, which would replace an entire year of taxes for the town. So over the four-year horizon that we typically try to make sure that we're fiscally constrained in, that's a 25% tax increase across the board, just to offset what we've gotten granted. that's a 25% tax increase across the board, just to offset what we've gotten grants the last two years. So I'm really proud of our staff for doing that. That's not something that we've had a legacy of here. And we've challenged our staff to, to do that and they've responded magnificently. So I thought the, um, that's worth mentioning again, just the total amounts. Trash and recycling, we'd mentioned, uh, upgrade on carts that are rolling out in January. We had a little bit of a snafu there. We received our, our first gray cart for inspection. And it was about the color of the white on the, uh, on the screen or the top of the, top of the mayor's cup there. And as most of you know, Harrisburg gray is kind of a, a deeper, a deeper gray. So the vendor flew down here from Wisconsin to meet with John Young, our public works director and I to go over colors. And, um, they're correcting the mistake at their cost. I'm not sure what it costs to them in-house, but I know, it's about $350,000 for us to buy those carts. So I, uh, I, I hope they didn't make all of them and they can, they can reuse those, um, once they scrap them up. But they are making new colors. That will cause a little bit of a delay though. Important for us to do it right. I mean, it's a big expenditure. It's a big rollout for us. I would rather delay this a little bit and get it right than, than rush into it, even though there is some, some cost with continuing the contract with Waste Pro and renting their carts while we wait for, um, ours to come in. I think, you know, we're, we still might be end of January, but more likely sometime in February for the rollout on this. We've communicated some of it out, but we'll also, um, once we have those dates, really push this out on social media. We have, um, literature that we can hang actually in the carts. So then anybody that misses the social media, postcards and, uh, just general notifications out to the public. Once we get the, the actual date pinned down, we'll, we'll really launch on that. Any questions on the, on the cart?
How much does, I know it costs them 350, how much does it cost us that delay? You said it might cost us?
We, we spend about 30,000 a month on, uh, carts rent, you know, that's, it's kind of built into the price, but it's approximately 30,000 a month for us to have carts at Waste Pro versus us to, to have our own carts done in-house.
So is there any performance guarantee from them or we're just SOL on our?
No, there's not. I mean, there, there is some liquidated damage in there from the time you approve a color versus when you get it, but there's some very specific, you know, approvals in there that I think there's, there's enough blame on both sides that, um, they're going to eat their cost and, and we're going to go with Waste Pro for that additional time. Now it is kind of moving some of, some of future money into the present, right? So we're paying 30,000 a month as we go through Waste Pro, which we've paid every year. So we did, um, budget for that. But also our carts, if we wait three months longer, we have our carts three months longer at the backend. So we have to replace them later, if that makes any sense. So from a 10-year model, it doesn't necessarily affect us. But from a single year budget standpoint, um, if it went too long, we would have to make some budget amendments. I hope I didn't complicate that too much.
One other question. We applied for two grants. Can we take them both? Did we get both? That doesn't fully fund the whole, we had a state and a federal.
Yeah. So if we get, uh, on the train station, you're talking about, so let's say the, you know, we asked for, and I'm going to say a number here, six to nine million from the feds and they say, well, we'll give you two and there's still that amount. We can, we can still go to the state legislature and say, hey, we're still, we're still down four to seven million. You know, can we get that from the STIP program or, or some other program? So yeah, they're not mutually exclusive. And then as a reminder, weather messed up our schedule a bit on the budget. So we are behind their retreat. We had to cancel due to snow in Geden that didn't show up. We were all very ready, uh, to get out and play in that. But, uh, the roads were still pretty dangerous. So I'm, I'm glad we didn't have that. We've rescheduled that for February 1st and we're ready to go on that same time, play it. Everything, just different date. The other meetings are still being worked out. I do know that we sent a survey out to the council members on availability. I'm still waiting on three folks to get back with me, but I know that full day Saturday, the 22nd is not going to work for everybody. I've already got like three people that can't make that one. So we're going to split, we're going to have to, I think, split our department head meeting into two days. We'll probably do two, three hour days on those other four days that we sent out. If that for some reason doesn't work out, once we get all of the results back from the survey, we built a month of extra time into the budget. So we would just go till after spring break and extend it and pass our budget in June instead of May. So we, we have plenty of time there, but I think to stay on schedule, if we can split it into like a Tuesday, Thursday, that everybody's available, um, that'll, that'd be fine with us. That's all I have, mayor.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Next up, we have Brian Lee with our finance report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have your finance report as of December 31st or 50% of the way through our fiscal year. So you can see here, tax collections, we received 50% in the month of December, which brought us to 68% for the fiscal year. So we're in wonderful shape for where we sit in the fiscal year. Um, and we're on track with all prior years for our typical collections. Uh, December is a huge month based on escrow distributions. Uh, we also just received a deposit in this first week of January, another sizable one that really moves us along and essentially leaves with, leaves us with just motor vehicle taxes to finish out the year. So we're in great shape there. General fund overall is at 64%, so it's looking great as well. The water and sewer fund and stormwater fund both increased by 8%, which is right on target for the month, bringing them to 54 and 50% on the year. So great shape there for revenues. Departmental expenditures over operations are shown for the first general government departments. All about at 40% as we sit 50% through the year. So no budgetary concerns there across those departments. Same story across all remaining general fund departments. And I'll point out there in about the middle of the page that the environmental protection department's at 42%. So we're monitoring that as we have this extra $30,000 a month in, in cart fees, as we just discussed. We're still 8% under budget across the entire fiscal year. So we're watching that rental fee, but we did budget for the entire year as a worst case scenario in this department. Uh, so we're seeing the benefit of that right now as we sit about 42% expensed. Parks and Rec at 51% as it works through athletic seasons and events. The water and sewer fund is at 45% and the stormwater fund at 31. So all departmental operations are in great shape. And salaries across the entire town at 42%. And we'll move into our project dashboard. Uh, December was a bit of a slow month, but we do have a couple items to point out here. The first one are the picnic tables for Harrisburg Park and at Harris Depot. That contract has been signed and that order has been placed. And so they should be received and distributed to those parks within a month or two. Moving on, we have the annual sanitary sewer rehab. That project has been moved up to about 75% complete. They are still working to line manholes and sewer lines and, uh, making good progress. Only about a quarter of that project remains. And lastly, our last mention of Powell bill for the year. Uh, so we had a, uh, a full depth reclamation of one road, resurfaced, uh, a bunch of roads and did a lot of striping. So here you can see the striping that took place on Raging Ridge as it approaches the roundabout there with the new centerline stripe. But that resurfacing project is complete. So we'll take our Powell bill reserves that are left over from this year, combined with next year's distribution, and we have about a million dollars as we head into next year's transportation projects. Here's our multi-year projects that are under design. The first is town hall renovation up to about 8%. Uh, we held the kickoff meeting with the consultant in December and that consultant is now gathering information. That's the phase that they're in there, uh, which includes a needs assessment and a survey that's been sent out to each department to, um, figure out what our growth is going to look like, what kind of needs we have for the redesign of this building. Um, they mix that with our 10-year staffing plan and their own growth projections and, uh, provide us back with a recommendation for our facility size and layout. This is a look at our multi-year projects under construction. The main one to draw your attention to here is the Highway 49 corridor plan, uh, phase one. You can see it's at about 20%. This picture is already a little bit outdated as they've done some more work out there. But this is the Financial Way extension between McDonald's and Sherwin-Williams, making progress there. This is a look at our equipment projects for the year. We did not have any movement as we wait for those items in yellow to come in. And we have three projects that still need to get off the ground for the year. And our vehicle projects, much the same story as the equipment, most has been ordered. Uh, we did receive one truck in December, the, what, the replacement water technician truck. So it just needs its outfit items and will be placed in service in January. And lastly, our professional services projects, two to comment on here, the two planning projects, the comprehensive strategic plan. Uh, consultant interviews are scheduled for the end of January and the selection of the consultants will occur in February with the contract brought to council in March. And then that has about a nine to 12 month timeline, I believe. And lastly, the town center overlay plan, uh, the scope of work is being finalized right now with a selected vendor. And so that contract should be awarded in February. And Rob touched on the budget calendar has changed pretty significantly from the last time you saw this slide. Uh, so we know that the council retreat has moved to Saturday, February 1st. And then we have a lot of to be determined on the screen, which will work out over the next couple of days. And I'll keep everyone updated on those dates. I'm still hoping in the last column that, uh, we're in April and May, but like Rob said, that could be May and June. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian?
One quick question. I don't know which budgetary item it falls under, but, uh, council and price brought up at one point about signage and beautification. And then it kind of struck me when we have that big green dot in the middle that it screams for art or a Harrisburg town sign or something. I'm asking you because it's a money issue, but then I don't know. We talked about, it gets crazy if you start doing art, whether that falls under parks or engineering or beautification or what, but it just seems kind of naked.
We do have a couple of our street related projects, like the main street project, um, and our future ones with roundabouts where we will build, we have that cost built into the assumptions of either construction or design. Uh, we also have some feelers put out to the hatch committee for them to help us design and maybe even produce that as well. There will be a cost with that, but that can just get built normally into the construction cost for any of these types of projects.
Well, and then I don't know the decision-making process on, you know, certain parts of town, you come in, you see that nice monument and logo looks great. And other parts looks like, you know, the DOT has been at work again. It's terrible. So I don't know who gets what.
Yeah. So it, it's been a work in, in progress on kind of identifying our boundaries that way. And you're, you're big on this one, uh, from go, right? From, from your first meeting. And, um, Casey and, and Lee have been working on this quite a bit, especially with our new public works director on identifying those entrance points. And, you know, initially it was 49, right? That's, that's the main thoroughfare coming in. So we have that nice monument that, that defines from where you go from Mecklenburg, now you're in Harrisburg. As you're coming, um, in from the east, you also have at Farmillo, you know, big monument sign there. But then as the town has grown, where, where's next? Where are these other spots? A Rocky River Road? That's, we're designing one out there right now at the Farmington entrance to define that Mecklenburg-Harrisburg line. Uh, but I also think there's, there's opportunities for many, um, improvements that aren't necessarily monument signs, right? Everywhere a pedestrian crosses is an opportunity to beautify, to, to identify your brand, to add landscape and, and landscape architecture and art. And now I don't know that you want a civil engineer, uh, telling you what, what art should be out there. So that, that becomes the difficult part. What, where we've gone right now is over to, to Jim and as a department head to funnel that through our hatch committee, because that really is their, their bailiwick. And then kind of bringing that back through staff and, and, um, implementing that in things like our roundabouts. You know, we've requested Stallings Road to be turned over to the town from NC DOT. So you have those two roundabouts. Art in the center of those is something that, that we'd love to see. That wouldn't meet any NC DOT standard. They would never allow that on a DOT road, which is why we, we have to own that in order for it to, to have our brand. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for that, especially as we upgrade Main Street and town center. As we look at Roberta Roundabout, as we look at the Stallings Roundabouts, and then as we define our borders, Roberta coming in to town and then the Rocky River corridor being the next major corridor, uh, east and west in town. So that's, those are the areas we're looking at. And I know Casey and Lee are working really hard and, uh, Brian just, you know, gets the yips when we tell them how much it's going to cost.
It is something that's being discussed with all these projects and it is being included in those budgets. And you'll, you'll hear about some of those throughout budget season. We've got some more ideas on that front. But it's something that I guess was probably an afterthought in the past and it's something that we're actively thinking about now.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
I'm excuse the commotion. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty up here. So just bear with us. Um, next up on our agenda is our law enforcement update. Unfortunately Captain Miesmer and Lieutenant Nash are unable to be with us this evening. There is a very active police situation that is happening right now that is taking them away. We're hoping to be able to still give, um, the update. Rob, I'm happy to, or is Brian doing?
I can, I can walk through the numbers. I'm not sure if, if, uh, in the, in the presentation, if, um, police were first or fire was first, but if we want to walk through the numbers.
Yeah, police is first on the agenda.
Okay. We, we just go through and you guys can take a look at these slides and I can answer any questions that you have. As the mayor said, they're, they're, they're caught up in a, a police incident. Um, everybody is safe. Town is fine, but they're not able to be here, um, at this moment. So here's your, your normal, uh, law enforcement related activities. Slide that they give us with the security checkpoints and traffic stops. I'm not sure what that time is in relation to last month, but what we tend to do is look at our non-emergency response time and see if it's trending up, down, if this is a lateral, um, and Captain Miesmer and I'll go over that quarterly. Next. I don't know anything about that.
They did have, they did have the click at our ticket boost and was very successful. I think they posted on their social media site, um, the number of citations that they gave during that campaign.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was not involved with that one, um, but I'm sure they had an auditor or two, um, asking them to, to leave them alone and not show their license. So.
Okay, two slides.
So that's it. That's the big presentation. Were there any questions? Yeah. Thank you, Walt. Thank you. Did, did you guys have anything, you know, usually in this section, um, there are some, some, you know, comments from roads with speeding that you all have gotten from residents or where are we at on this, that or another? I do my best to, to answer those if you have any of those now. If not.
I'll just say, I was, I was glad to see the signage change where it normally would be the speed radar. Those switched to worn of icy conditions on the road over the past weekend. So that was a change, a really nice change.
Yep. And, uh, Lieutenant Nash implemented that. So, you know, right before, um, right before the storm, but during our, uh, emergency management meeting, she'd, she'd mentioned they were putting those out and warning people of icy road conditions. So we, we have a great, great group over there at the sheriff's department. They're, they're, they're doing quite a bit and we keep them busy. They're not used to this type of interaction with the public. I mean, sheriff's departments generally, you know, you got one sheriff and he kind of interacts with the public and, and the deputies just, just go out into these more rural areas. Our folks here operate more like a city police department and that's, that's a different dynamic with what a deputy has to do. So, uh, they do a great job and they've adapted to us as we, as we get bigger. It's a, um, it's a good group out there.
I would think of something witty to say in his absence, perhaps Chief Dunn tried to jump up and take his spot on the agenda since he wasn't here. I'm kidding.
I was trying to think of a joke I could tell him.
I know, right?
Well, I'll tell you at our last meeting, he had, he had warned us about the devil's dust. The three inches of devil's dust that was, that was supposed to come upon us, that we were to be careful. And, and, uh, so I'll, I'll give you that, uh, Captain Miesmerism, uh, right there. The devil's dust for snow.
Perfect. Next up, we have our fire updates. Welcome, Chief Dunn.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
I seen y'all's blank as well.
Yes. It's, it's showing up on the YouTube channel, just not on our screen.
We're dead.
You don't have it from memory, chief?
Well, I've got it in front of me. I'd be glad to run through it real quick.
I know it's showing on the YouTube channel as well.
I'm fine to listen.
We'll listen and tell.
So as we start out with fire marshal activities during the month of December, typically they're just playing catch up. So not a lot of activity there. As Rob mentioned earlier, they do attend the development meetings. There we go.
Happy Monday, everyone. You brought the sirens with you tonight.
All right. Here we go again. So as far as fire prevention events, of course, ladder truck did escort Santa Claus into our tree lighting ceremony. So that was on December 6. You can see our general activities for the fire marshals office as to what they do inspections on, the general inspections, strip miles, things of that nature, daycares, foster cares, and fire protection systems within the town. They completed 42 inspections during the month of December. 10 of those were re-inspections. And then you can see the totals that they completed for the year 2024. Picture to the right is a typical violation that we see. Fire extinguishers need to be tested annually. Some of the violations that they do find, fire extinguishers tend to leave the pack, but you can see all the other violations that they do see, emergency lighting, emergency access, things of that nature. As far as our operational statistics, we did respond to, had a busy month in December, which is pretty typical for fall. And as it gets colder, we did respond to 299 incidents during the month of December. Our response time was a little over four minutes, and that did come down a little bit as predicted last month. And you can see that as it relates into this bar graph that we have for the past 12 months. As far as fires, we actually did not have a fire in the city or fire district, but we did assist the city of Charlotte with two apartment fires over near the university. We did assess Concord Fire with a fire over on Gateway Drive at Taco Bell or KFC. If everybody remembers, Midland had a rather large brush fire in their area. We did assist them with that as well. And then Flowstore had a, a large barn on fire just off Lazy Ridge Drive. Station one continues to be the busiest, and station followed by station two and then station three. Incident types pretty much remains the same each month. And then our heat map, which dictates where most of our responses are, and you can see the most of them are in neighborhoods far along the 49 corridor. As far as operational updates, we did complete our TR, which is Technical Rescue Rope Class in December. We hosted an emergency vehicle driver class in partnership with Rowan Cabares. We did complete our SEBA or South Containment Breathing Apparatus training in the month of December as well. We did put together an annual slide just to go over a few of the numbers. You can see our average response time for the month, for the year 24 was a little over four minutes. We did have 164 incidents that were related to motor vehicle accidents. We did have 20 fires in the last year. We did have five CPR saves. So that's always something good, good to see. And then you can see the number of medical calls, incidents we've gone on. And then Chief Wooton always likes to turn this statistic around where the amount of property that we saved. So the value of property, and then what the damage, what was not damaged is that number that you see there. And that's it.
Any questions for Chief Dunn? Thank you so much, sir. It's at the end. It's underneath business, yeah.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
Excited.
Just a couple of mayor's comments this evening. Last week, I attended the Central Lina Board of Delegates meeting where we heard their 25, 26 annual budget. It's about 15 to 20 million dollars. We currently pay for those services based on a population rate at 20% 24 cents per capita. They have not had a rate increase in 10 years. If they do operate at their current rates, they're looking at an almost $100,000 deficit. So we were challenged with what do we present our, our annual meeting in February for the delegation? We voted to present a one cent increase this year and potentially a one cent increase the following year. Funding sources for Centralina has heavily relied on state and federal grants, but we are hearing from the powers that be that we are expecting a very lean grant season. That obviously would affect the bottom line there. Also would like to point out that 64 of the 68 counties in that region participate with Centralina. And I think Rob had mentioned them earlier. So advocacy at the legislative level is really one of their focuses. We've had several conversations just this evening about, about that. And I've seen it very helpful from a direct perspective. And I'll give you an example. At our meeting, we addressed Senate Bill 382. That would limit local government authority for down zoning. And we see this deeply in Harrisburg as our current bill creates barriers to updating and amending land use regulations in response to community and market needs. So if something is zoned for a higher density, but you look and see what the market's doing, we don't have the opportunity to go in and downzone that to something more comparable for what our community is looking for. It also impacts the ETJ and voluntary annexations. It conflicts with the state requirements, and it really undermines our ability to implement long-term planning strategies at a local level. So just to echo more of the restrictions that Rob mentioned early. And it also applies retroactively to local decisions that were made in the past six months. So it's a pretty significant bill. We do with Centralina represent a large number, and we decided that we thought it was in our region's best interest to partner with the North Carolina League of Municipalities and kind of present a united front of some of the issues with this bill that maybe they were unaware of and how it directly impacts our area. So I will certainly keep you updated on any changes here. But I did want to mention that budget increase as we are going through our budget process to make sure that that is included in ours as well. Several big things happening this week, both on Wednesday that you've heard about, but just a reminder that the topping out ceremony at the YMCA, you might ask, what is a topping out ceremony? Because I was not sure myself. It's actually when they put the last beam in the construction over the YMCA, and it's just really a celebratory opportunity to kind of mark that progress for a very long awaited project that we've had in Harrisburg. That will begin at 11:30 on Wednesday at the site. They will be running a shuttle bus. There is more information on our social media page as well as the YMCA page, and it is open to the public. So we certainly hope that you will all be able to join us there. Also on Wednesday evening is the board adjustment hearing. They will hear from Venator, Venitor Chemical on their special use permit request to construct a chemical landfill on their property off of Farmill Road. This meeting with board of adjustments will be held at 6:30 PM. It has been moved from council chambers for space over to Main. It's gathering on Main, which is the Venture Church, right in this same complex down on the corner there. All of that information is also on our website. So we certainly hope to see our community attending those proceedings. And lastly, I just wanted to once again offer our condolences to the family of Salisbury Mayor Karen Alexander. She leaves behind a beautiful legacy of public service. Her passing, her passing certainly leaves some big shoes to fill for the city of Salisbury. They did have services honoring her on Saturday, although I'm sure weather kind of put a little hiccup in that. They were also having another service for her at Catawba College this evening. So hated to miss that. But please continue to keep her community in our prayers. And that is all for my comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
The Concord Cabares MLK Community Committee is having celebrations that begin on Wednesday at 5:30 with a replay ceremony at Grace Lutheran Church and the Dream Awards banquet Friday evening at the Gibson Mill. And then on Monday, there will be a dream parade at 11:00 AM, followed by an HBCU college fair, as well as minority businesses that will be highlighted beginning at 12.
Mayor, I fully expect next month to bring a letter of support from the CRMPO, the Concord, Rowan Traffic or Planning Organization. As I chair that, they've already written the letter. All we need to do is just get everybody on board. So that will be coming back based on the federal grant application. More the support, the better. I also understand we have some other delegates that are getting in behind that as well. I think you said Alma Adams is going to send a letter of support as well, so.
Yeah, and our, our federal delegation are all sending it directly to federal DOT. So US DOT will get it directly, and we'll, we have copies of it.
Any other council comments this evening?
Thank you. We do have one public hearing this evening. It's regarding text amendments of the various chapters of the UDO. And Shelley Dehart will be with us this evening to present those changes, and then we will open it up for comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I always appreciate the opportunity to present cases before the council. As read into the record, this is a text amendment of various chapters of the Unified Development Ordinance for the purpose of modifying, adding development regulations to enhance the quality of life for residents. It is staff's recommendation to conduct the public hearing and approve as presented. Now, this is the second in a series of proposed text amendments of the UDO that will be coming before council. Moving forward, staff will be distributing these draft amendments concurrently with the planning board's packet. So to give a little more time for review and to receive comments back from the council. Now, this particular amendment is focused on Section 14104, which is development, tree protection, landscaping, and buffers, as well as Chapter 14106, that is focused on outdoor lighting. With regard to the development landscaping chapter of the UDO, this section is proposed really for corrective action. There are problems in formatting and content, one of which is with one of our buffers. We have a table that is supposed to correlate with the actual detail for the buffer. And what we found is it requires a 12 foot wide buffer in the table, yet the detail only shows an eight foot buffer in width. So we are correcting issues such as that within this chapter. Chapter 14106 is focused on outdoor lighting. We're proposing to add regulations that give us the ability to require specific lighting fixtures and/or style depending on where the development is occurring. Is it within a planned development or adjacent to an area that already has a specific style of lighting, such as a decorative Hagerstown lighting fixture? We're also adding a maximum foot candle requirement for development sites when they are located adjacent to residential use. Now, a foot candle is a measurement of light intensity. So our ordinance currently just has a foot candle average over site. So they could put a very bright light adjacent to, on a shared property line to residential property. So we are proposing to add a two foot maximum foot candle, which is, is appropriate for the border of a parking lot or walking path. We've also added some language to clarify the town's street lighting policy that it applies to both existing and proposed streets, whether they're maintained by the town or NCDOT or private road. Now, this gives us the authority, again, to require specific lighting types and lighting fixtures to ensure that we have cohesive development within the town. So this amendment was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board at its December meeting. After a brief deliberation, the board unanimously approved a motion to recommend the town council approve this amendment as presented. They also found that the amendment was in compliance with all the requirements of the UDO and did further the goals of the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan under the topic of land use and development design. So with that, I stand by with any, to answer any questions you may have, and we have provided a recommended motion.
Counsel, are there any questions before we move into public hearing? Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the public hearing portion regarding the recommended motion. And we did have a sign up. We did not have anyone that signed up to speak about the ordinance. So with that, we will close public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion is carried. Thank you so much. We do not have any old business this evening, and we do have one item of new business that was discussed earlier. So we're happy to have Chief Dunn back with us to explain the grant from Duke Energy.
All right. Good evening again. So we have a new business item. It's a consideration to, of a budget ordinance to amend for a grant from Duke Energy for our swift water team. So the Duke Energy Grant, they're willing to give us $25,000 with no match tied to it. This funding is part of a $2.2 million commitment from Duke Energy Foundation to support disaster relief, recovery across North Carolina readiness, things of that nature. This equipment will be used to purchase personal protective equipment, which includes dry suits, personal flotation devices, things of that nature. And again, a little history on our team. The Harrisburg Swift Water Rescue Team is one of 43 teams within the state that assists and is deployable to hazardous incidents that occur within our state, similar to what we did with Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Detter. So again, the grant will be used to purchase some new swift water rescue equipment, which will include a boat, personal protective equipment. Again, will be some dry suits, personal flotation devices, helmets, and then night tracking beacons, and then some rope equipment. We did include a motion to approve, and you can read through that. And that is, oh, yeah.
Thank you, Chief Dunn. Are there any questions for Chief Dunn or Rob regarding?
I do have a question. Is this two-part question? Would this be high on your list to buy anyway? I know they specifically want it for this purpose. And does this cause us to spend any more money? I get the free app and end up buying a hundred dollar steak. So is this going to cause this $25,000 any more expense on our side, or will that cover everything we saw?
No, it'll cover everything. So you'll have maintenance on a boat, just as we normally would.
Yeah.
But they're, they're rubber boats, so they typically don't require a whole lot of maintenance, just besides, you know, inspecting and making sure everything stays intact.
Okay. Well, then I guess the first part of the question doesn't matter because it doesn't cost us any more money.
As far as for this grant of match or anything like that?
Yeah.
This is one of those grants we love because it doesn't expand our program. You know, this isn't doubling the size, and then five years from now, we got to replace it. We would have to do these things. And I'm, you know, they're in our replacement schedule somewhere, but this really offsets a cost to say, hey, continue to do this. You know, here's a grant that offsets that cost, so you can do it a little bit longer. So it's not one of the, we'll pay for half of your firemen. So it's not one of the, we'll pay for half of your firemen now and you pay for all of it when we quit the grant kind of thing, which is, which is the ones that you guys and I always, always ask the questions about.
Was there an application process that they come to us? Or do we go to them? Or do we have to write?
So I think we got a notice of intent for them to do that through the North Carolina Emergency Management because they really focused on with Helene and even, and then this application went in before them. But I think they do this every year as far as their foundation. But I think this year, after that happened, they particularly focused in on teams like ourselves.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief Dunn?
Good job, chief.
All right, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget ordinance recognizing the $25,000 Duke Energy grant?
Motion.
Is there a second? A second? Two seconds? You get to pick, Jana. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you, counsel.
I got a little squirrely on the action items, Rob, because we had a couple of things coming up. I think we had some follow-up with some discussion that happened this evening. But what?
Yeah, and I, and I don't know that I specifically called it out in public comment, but we want to have a meeting with the folks out in Lakeview in order to kind of spread this message with all of the neighbors and not just Mr. and Mrs. Adams who came here this evening. We have some follow-up with our, our engineering folks in the Addison Park. I took a note to make sure, and I really think this is a budget discussion and probably if we get into it on our retreat a little bit about kind of our border definition and our public art and, and kind of that whole program and the status of it. So those are the three that I marked out.
Wonderful. Thank you. We do have a need for closed session this evening and that is to discuss the Venator Chemical Landfill Special Permit Request and legal matters surrounding that. And to maintain the integrity with that process, I will ask Councilman Patrick to step out as well, since he currently serves on the Board of Adjustments. In the interim, we will take a quick break and then resume back for closed session. And then there is nothing else on the agenda after closed session for those in the audience this evening. Moving into closed session. Second, second.